Okay, it's seven o'clock, March the 11th. We'll bring the Brimfield Township zoning commission public meeting to order. If I could have a roll call, please, Lauren.
Okay, Ron Jones.
Here.
Tom Johnson.
Here.
Debbie Darless.
Here.
Tom Sargent.
Here.
Patrick Blair. Seth Haylen.
Here.
Let Willows next.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Second please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We have no minutes on hand from the last meeting, I don't think, so. Right at the moment then, in that case, we're going to be talking to Tom Lee and also Tom Todd Peace and this. I think we're going to start with Tom first, right, Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
Tom Way's first.
Why don't you introduce us and give us a briefing here?
Yeah, so Tom Way is with the Skipper Group and he is looking, he owns the property behind McDonald's and Speedway and also in front of the school. He's looking, it's right now it's zone integrated commercial and Todd and I, they had a meeting with Tom and had some discussions about potentially changing the zoning there to get something to pop. So he is here tonight to talk about some things he'd like to see as we're developing this future land use plan. So we, you know, obviously want to hear his input as well.
Okay, Tom, go ahead, please.
Well, thank you. Well, just for a little bit of history, most of you probably remember that we started that Brinkley Crosses project way back in 2003. And we assembled, starting with what was known as the Walter Kaufman Farm and then also a property owned by Patricia Knapp. And then next to that, a building owned by Denny Taylor, assembled all that land on the west side of 43. And then a couple of years later, also the land on the east side of 43 in front of the school. Most of that was property that the school owned. We also had to acquire another house lot, which was torn down to create the intersection there. I don't know if a lot of people realize, but that was not a acquisition on the east side of 43 that we sought, but rather the town, the school had come to us. I think that the school had had some conversation with the township and for whatever reason, they didn't see eye to eye on the value. I think some of that was driven by the school having run out of money in their budget to build the new Brinkley Elementary Building. So we worked out an arrangement where we acquired that land and tore down the buildings. We actually, the Skipper Group paid for all of that new roadway that accessed the school. School didn't have funding otherwise for that and even helped with building the school's parking lot. And so we ended up with about three and a half acres on that east side. I think some of you are aware that we recently had a Sheetz that had desired to purchase that. We had no idea there'd be opposition like there was to that project and the BZA has voted that down. So I'm not sure what other uses would be workable for the east side there. You know, perhaps some kind of retail, drugstore, bank, I'm not certain, but it's a little bit of an awkward size. The three and a half acres would be larger than what a lot of users might need. So it's probably a situation where we have to subdivide and find two or three users for that acreage. You know, restaurant or fast food establishment might only need an acre of land. Some would even need less than that. So then you get into questions about access, shared curb cuts and things like that, cross access easements. So it's certainly workable, but it's not an easy site to develop because of the size and because ODOT does restrict that access. We believe that ODOT will give us an access point off of 43 at the very southern end of that property. And then there would be ability to tap in also off of Falcon Drive. In any event, that's three and a half acres on the east side. Right now, that's zone town center. I don't envision there'd ever be any kind of a retail, I'm sorry, any kind of a residential use on that property. I think it would be commercial in any event. So there's a, you know, a good portion of that town center zoning, which we feel doesn't really fit in terms of any potential residential uses. At least anything that we would envision building, maybe somebody else would have some creative ideas there. If we jump across the street to the west side where the bulk of our acreage is at, you know, the only thing that we've developed thus far would be the McDonald's restaurant that's right there on 43. And then we sold some land to Speedway so that they could enlarge their station and do the truck fueling there up against the interstate. We actually have three different zoning classifications on that acreage on the west side, which is difficult for me to explain when I am talking to a prospective user and you have to walk them through all of that. So there's a bit of a confusion factor there. The bulk of that acreage in the back, end of the current cul-de-sac, is zoned integrated commercial. At the time, we were anticipating back in 2004, five, six, seven, that we'd be developing that as big box retail. And we've had conversation with a number of different users over the years. Some of those that have been publicly acknowledged would be Target, that deal obviously didn't happen. Menards was another that we had conversation with, developed site plan for, but ultimately they chose to land on the Maple Crest site next to Meyer. I think at this point, we have dampened or lowered our own expectation that we would see any type of big box retail there, at least in the next decade. The population and number of rooftops in the area would really need to grow substantially to, to fit or to satisfy, you know, what the supply now is between the Cascades development and the Maple Crest development. I think because they have good interstate access, all those entities, Walmart, Lowe's, Myers, Menards, I think they'll all survive. They can draw from a large radius, but they're not making their big profit on just the immediate, you know, one, two, three mile radius. They're depending on a bigger draw. So for those reasons, we don't feel as likely that we would ever land any big box user. We've certainly tried. We've had hopes of grocery anchor, something like a Giant Eagle, but they just don't want to dip their toe in the market with the heavy hitters like Super Walmarts and Myers that are in the marketplace. As we have tried to expand our thinking and what other types of uses, you know, for the last couple of years, we have attempted to have conversation with different users in the warehousing, logistics, even light industrial arena. And we've actually had some traction with some of those parties, but having to tell them right up front, look, the property is not zoned for this. We have to have a rezoning or variance from township. So that's always limited how far we can go. In particular, probably the biggest challenge we have is that the way economic development has really evolved over the last decade, and it's not just Ohio, it's everywhere. You have economic development professionals and agencies who receive the lion's share of any large projects that might be on horizon. And those typically are funneled through, in our case, Jobs, Ohio, and then that gets funneled down to Teen Neo, which is northeast Ohio. And then from there, it's funneled to organizations like the Greater Akron Chamber, if it's in Summit County, or in our case, the Porter's Development Board in Portage County. So what happens is they will typically send out a request for information or an email blast saying, here's what we're looking for. They give you a very short timeframe to respond and they often will be pitting you against all of the six or seven regions in the state of Ohio and oftentimes multiple states. So they're getting all these different municipalities and developers to submit their information and immediately be competing against each other. What happens though is that if you don't meet all of the minimum requirements, you know, things like utility capacity and certainly zoning would be a big one. You're automatically discarded from that, that consideration. So you're immediately weeded out and oftentimes, for example, Brad Erhart at the Porter's Development Board will be told, you know, you can only submit your top two or three properties that qualify. Or they do that at the teen needle level saying, okay, you've gathered information from the chamber, from Porter's Development Board, now only give us the top three. And if they don't meet any of the qualifications, you're automatically discarded. So the reason I explain all that is simply to, is reinforce that if the township was open to, you know, some kind of a, say, a logistics firm or light manufacturing or warehouse, unless the property is actually zoned for that, we really don't even have the ability to market the property that way for the majority of the users out there who have been trained to make their first approach to Jobs, Ohio, not to individual property owners, because they're looking for state incentives, tax incentives that Jobs, Ohio could offer. If some of you might be aware, and this is, I guess, not totally confidential, you know, we had conversation with Mike and his team, oh, probably two years ago before the pandemic. There is a company that's local to the Akron region that was looking to relocate, you know, it's really a distribution center with an office component. It's a company that would have had about 150 jobs. We had explored with them and actually drawn a site plan for 150,000 square foot building on the site. And it never got far enough that we would make any application to township zoning officially. But that's a type of a project which did have a lot of traction and were it not for the pandemic, I think that we probably would have been approaching the township. It's one that happened to come to us direct because it was local and because we had a prior relationship with the builder who would have built that building. So that's an example, maybe the one rare case where, you know, it was a prospect that came through our own internal network. But for every one of those, there's probably 10 that come through the Jobs, Ohio, Teen Neo, Porter's Development channels, for which I don't have the ability to try to argue why my site would be a great possible site for them. It's a matter of filling out checklist and if you don't check any of the boxes, you're automatically disqualified. So I have said a lot, I'm happy to stop and entertain any questions either about the lane on the east side or the west side.
Anybody have anything?
Not at this time.
So Tom, you're looking to have this, that property rezoned to make it more appealing to a potential tenant then?
Well, as I've explained to Mike and to Todd, I would love to see some kind of big box retail. I just don't expect that there's a lot of demand, like a super regional user like an IKEA, that would be a home run. But I'd be surprised, you know, we've attempted and had no traction or response from them. So, you know, I, I would like to retain a lot of the flexible types of retail and office users that would be approved for our site. But if there's a way to retain that and then add things, you know, such as warehousing or logistics, light industrial, things that would be appropriate for being next to a major interstate, at an interchange. And of course, we had designed that property to function with high traffic volume. I think any of those types of users would probably generate less traffic than what we would have had with a couple of big boxes on the site. So all the infrastructure is there, utilities are there, the traffic light. Actually have two means of ingress into the property. You know, there's the drive that we have an easement across between Speedway and McDonald's. And then of course, our own intersection, we built Briffo Crossings Drive. That's several lanes wide, actually have two dedicated left out lanes as well as the dedicated right in lane. It's all designed for high volume, it works well for semi trucks, that's what it was designed for. Not that I'm anticipating tons of trucks, but depending on the type of use, if it was something in the logistics arena, that traffic is certainly able to be handled and accommodated by the intersection that we built.
Originally, when we, when we did that there, that we were sort of envisioning some sort of corporate offices there, you know, FedEx or, you know, one of those type of, of things. But they never came into realization. Then when Amazon started picking up here, I think some of us thought Amazon might get interested in it. But I don't know whether you've ever talked to any of those or not, or anybody that, you know, large enough to have corporate offices there.
Well, we certainly tried. That site is a pretty tough sell for an office user. I don't know if you're aware, but we actually, our company, the Skipper Group, actually built the FedEx Custom Critical headquarters in Green with a project we did spend now, oh, close to 20 years ago. That project is not one that would probably be built today. In fact, FedEx is looking at relocating out of that facility.
Yes, they are.
Yeah. Much of the, much of the mindset in corporate America now for office type users is to relocate into more urban downtown settings. So you're just like you see in the residential world where realtors talk about walkability score. That's now the talking point that corporate office brokers are using. What amenities do you have within walking distance, your office location? And that becomes a core part of a company's workforce strategy to attract and retain talent. So it's actually much more rare to find a company that might be willing to go build a headquarter in some suburban campus, you know, unless they have a high need for security. It's more likely that they would locate in an urban environment where you've got lots of amenities, hotels, restaurants, nightclubs, entertainment types of venues. So it's not to say that it couldn't happen. We've certainly tried with a number of different users over the years. You know, there's been a number of corporate headquarters in Cleveland that have kind of been playing musical chairs. And we've attempted with virtually all of those to get our foot in the door without success.
Anybody else have some questions there, Tom Johnson?
I have a question. Tom, what kind of questions when people call about this location do they have with putting a business there on 43? Because I would think it would be a benefit for them to be there with the expressway and everything. Do you have, what challenges are you experiencing if that is, if that's what I'm thinking?
So most large corporate types of users, if they had interest, you know, they probably have brokers that are working for them. And they, they do that as a way to insulate themselves and maintain their nondisclosure. So I might get a call from a broker, but I'm not, oftentimes at liberty, can even know who the end user is unless we get several rounds into a negotiation. Oftentimes, those brokers are going to do as much homework as they can before they then talk to myself as the owner, owner's representative. That's not always the case, sometimes I might be the first call, but usually, you know, it's not too difficult because everybody has information online. You know, a broker is able to discern what the zoning is. So a lot of times by the time a call might get to me, it's, hey, we noticed your property, you know, could have some potential, but do you think there's any chance that we could get it zoned for our use? So then I have to get into explaining the, you know, different types and maybe any precedents that might exist or what other communities have done, but I can't speak for the township, that's the township's decision. Now, I don't get many calls from corporate office types of users. More of those are from, like I said, the warehouse or logistics types of users because they need the immediate access to the interstate. The Speedway truck fueling is also something that I think attracts some positive attention that way. These guys literally measure the minutes or seconds that they can save, depending on how far each truck trip is and refueling and how, how long do you sit at a left, a traffic light to make a left-hand turn? Those things all add up over the course of year and significant dollar savings. So that's where they like to be as close as possible to an interstate. And then the fact that we've got direct frontage and visibility is obviously a plus.
Well, right now, it's, this is zone integrated, integrated commercial, is that right, Mike?
Yeah, that's correct. And if I may, I mean, Todd and I had some conversations, we'll share with you what our conversation was with Tom. Todd had some good ideas. Todd, do you want to talk about what your ideas were along that area and, you know, if it could potentially come to fruition?
Well, my first few ideas with Tom, that I shared with him probably years ago, were more self-serving. I was looking for like an IKEA or a Costco, but Tom just, like you said, already said, he didn't think those would be what they're looking for in those locations. So the other idea that me and Mike had talked about, we talked about with Tom, and Tom did explain why he didn't think it would work, but we thought, you know, what might work was a, I mean, like a First and Main up in Hudson, where you have some retail on the first floor and you actually have like two or three stories above that as residential. And have a town square, town kind of walkable town area to do that in. And that may not be the highest and best use for that property, but that, we thought that that would be a good fit there because I think that people want that kind of environment, the town center look. And then, you know, and we, we talked a little bit about how residential may or may not work there, but I know across the street it works. I mean, because they're selling, like, you know, they're further away from 43 and they're selling. We have that Greenways Golf Course is going, you know, has a condo component to it. But again, it's, it's more complicated, it's harder to do. And so, and so Tom wasn't really, didn't really believe that would work there. But that was what me and Mike had suggested is maybe an opportunity that maybe we should look into. And we also told Tom that, you know, we would want to work with him and do whatever he thought was best for the site. And we're just trying to figure out what the best, that best for the site is.
Yeah, and, and you know, looking at the zoning and looking at the map, we don't want to have, you know, and what we're trying to eliminate, if there is any, is spot zoning. I mean, we certainly don't want to get into this. Right now, we're kind of in a spot zoning area with this integrated commercial being right next to HC and Town Center. You know, we definitely don't want to get into heavy industrial or anything like that as well. Not coming into the town center, as soon as you come off the freeway, the first thing is that you're going to see is, is this. So as you approach into your town center, we create the town center with the new fire station. And then some of the plans we have with the other developer on 18 with Scasio and the whole town center look and how we're going to start creating it with, you know, the, the new soccer fields that, that were put in along the school. We want to keep that town center feel and walking and possibly, you know, Nick's on the phone as well here. We've talked about doing streetscapes down 43 and how we're going to get that accomplished, trying to merge that into, we have traffic concerns on the intersection there. And we looked at potentials of roundabouts or how we were going to do it with traffic signals and lieu of roundabouts. And those talks have to go on still with the county is that's still one of the most dangerous intersections in the county. So it's, it's definitely a high on the radar for AMETs and we'd like to see something happen there. But definitely wanted, that is the start of our town center going into that area. So we have to think and be creative with this.
Hey, Mike, if I can jump in there for a minute too, just from the township, you know, that's, this is part of that land use plan that we're working on, the comprehensive land use plan, the five-year strategic plan. And I think we need to take all this into consideration from all the stakeholders, both the property owners and then also the citizens here in Brimfield Township and the feedback that we got, looking at what is the vision today, tomorrow, five years, 50 years from now. And I know that a lot of people are asking and desiring a more of a downtown feel in that section and then maintaining a lot of a rural area. So I think those are just all pieces that we need to take into consideration and think about as we move forward with this land use plan and rezoning plans for the township. And, and I think we also have to keep in mind how that's going to be impacted, that location there with some of our future plans, like you alluded to. The route, potential for a roundabout or some change to the intersection of 43 and 18, because we're trying to work some AMETs dollars and some other funding sources to get the majority of that covered for the county and state so that we can, you know, really tie all these pieces together. So, you know, just looking at the total vision has to be part of this too. And I think that's part of this comprehensive land use plan that we're working on.
Well, Tom, what are you, what are you envisioning? What, what do you want, put it that way?
Well, so I'm answering on behalf of David Skipper, the owner of, you know, he is a 78-year-old gentleman. I think is probably seeing himself less and less as a developer as the years go by. It's not that he wouldn't sink a shovel in the ground to build for a specific user, but he's not in the position in his career now where he would be doing any type of spec development. And I think also, you know, something along the lines of a First and Main, you know, Pinecrest, those are pretty risky projects. It takes a lot of capital and a lot of funding sources to put those kinds of things together. And, you know, I suppose that a lot of this is probably due to the pandemic right now, but those developments are under a lot of duress. You're having lenders take back in some cases, those assets, trying to do workouts, they economically are a tough nut. And Brimfield just doesn't have the demographics to support something like that. You can break that down a number of ways, whether it's looking at the concentric rings or household wealth, just population. You know, those things need to be in a Beechwood type of a location and even then they're not a guarantee to pan out. So I don't think there's any high likelihood that something like that would ever, ever come to fruition. I mean, the closest thing that we've ever had any inquiry about would be kind of like an outlet mall type of development. But I don't think there's any hope for something like that now, given all the retail that's now at Maple Crest and Cascades. And that would be something to keep in mind. You know, it's, I think, very telling that the only deal we've done besides Speedway is McDonald's because they can make a living off of the traffic they get from the interstate. I have personally contacted every single restaurant chain in the U.S. And the question that I always get, if I'm lucky enough to get somebody on the phone or answer email is, well, who's your anchor? Well, I don't have an anchor. So they say, well, that's nice, call me if you get an anchor. So I think even our ability to, you know, develop the outlets for anything other than something that is strictly a highway service type of a user is right now pretty limited until we would get some kind of a traffic generator on the back, whether that be, you know, ideally be a corporate headquarters of some sort with, you know, 300 office jobs or some kind of retail that's bringing traffic in. Right now, it'd just be very difficult to get a sit-down restaurant, you know, unless it was one whose business model is built on being located at major interstates. So it's just kind of the long and short of where we're stuck. I mean, it's kind of an in-between site in that way. I mean, it's great location, great visibility, great access, all utilities, no wetlands, has all the right talking points. But I think given the fact that we've got all the retail that's just a mile away to the west. And then, you know, the other thing we haven't really talked about would be all the medical users. We've got relationships where we are or have been a landlord to UH, Cleveland Clinic, Akron Children's, Sumo. UH Cleveland Clinic, Accra Children's, Sumo, all of those guys. And this site is just kind of in between. Uh, the last book we had would have been Children's. They looked at our three and a half acres, but decided to build up on the 59, uh, between Kent and Ravenna. So all the others, you know, ha- have facilities that cover that market area or in the case of NeoMed, you've got that major facility just to the east, you know, out at 76 and 44. So any large-scale medical development is probably going to just be add-ons to those existing facilities at NeoMed. Uh, you know, there are 261 and 43, uh, you know, unless, you know, unless somebody want to do something, you know, outside of, of, uh, the normal business model, medical is very capital intensive and those guys do a lot of demographic research before they'd sink a shovel on the ground.
Yeah. Cleveland Clinic could be, you know, they don't have anything right in this area up except that a little fast clinic on 43.
Right. Yep. So that's, they feel that that is sufficient. Uh, you know, basically they have satellite facilities which are designed to you know, meet the, the immediate needs of community, but then feed traffic to the main campus downtown. A lot of that's driven by insurance reimbursement rates.
Yeah.
Uh, in terms of the types of services and where they offer those. Uh, you know, the, the fellow was with Akron General, now Cleveland Clinic, who makes a lot of decisions. He's a personal acquaintance of mine and, uh, at one time we had some conversation about doing a 20,000 square foot building. Modeled after one we built for them agreeing and they were a tenant for 20 some years. Uh, but at the end of the day, eh, economics just didn't work. And they're also in an industry that's continuing to evolve. So they have to find ways to become more and more efficient. And that's why they made the decision just to dip their toe in the water and do that, uh, facility that's up the road there in Gary's building.
Well, well, we uh, Tom, this is COVID thing, then I think we're going to have a difficult time finding a sit-down restaurant or, uh, and almost anything else to, you know, not too many large businesses are, you know, are going to expand right now until, uh, I don't see for another year anyway.
So Tom, it's Nick Coia.
For hotels to be built in the near future.
Tom, um, just, uh, just a kind of a, a question for both either you or Todd, uh, or both of you. Um, how does, how does the impact of development affect this? So for example, we'll, we'll look at it from two angles. Angle one being the town, if, if we are able to move forward with the town center project, we're getting those sidewalks in, we're getting more, uh, slowed down traffic on 43, getting that roundabout in, getting some businesses to, to go there. How does that affect that property? And vice versa, if we do, if it is re-zoned and we get a manufacturing firm that's pulling in large semis, um, and that type of traffic, how does that affect our downtown center then? Is there, is there kind of a given, given take with that? Um, can they be independently operated? Uh, and how do they affect each other?
So your question is if the township was to do some of the, uh, street improvements, sidewalks, lighting, does that attract development? Is that the question?
Yeah. So if, if we were to do all that work, you know, and basically that's going to slow the speed down on 43 because that's, that's part of our mission, right? To create a safer intersection there. If that happens, that changes the look, the feel, the demographics of downtown. Does that then re-revalue your property to be, uh, looked at by different investors at that point or different builders? Um, and vice versa, by putting in some type of large manufacturing from there, is that going to then stop any development in this, in the town center district?
Okay. So I, I think that if there were new improvements done, that I'll just say that they're, uh, for beautification, uh, enhancing, you know, things like lighting, sidewalks, whatnot. Yeah. That probably is a benefit to, uh, anybody that might be a, you know, office type of a user. I mean, they're going to look at quality of life factors for their employees. What's within walking distance and, and, you know, what is the overall aesthetic feel uh, within the perimeter of, of their, you know, office campus? Uh, it's probably not much of a factor for most other types of users, uh, you know, even anybody who would be a, you know, highway service type of user, fast food. I, I don't think they really care so much about what's with the walking distance. They're much more concerned about how many cars can I get through my drive-through per hour? Uh, their, their traffic, their customers, you know, coming from the interstate primarily. I, I think to your other question, uh, you know, if there was a, uh, you know, just to use the, for example, the, um, the distribution center and, and office that would have been, uh, uh, in my opinion, a good fit for the property that we were talking to two years ago. I think that that would have attracted more development. Uh, yeah, I think there's lots to be said for momentum. And certainly adding 150 jobs there probably would have created some additional demand for, who knows, maybe a, a restaurant uh, or other types of users that, you know, that they're, they probably like to be near interstate, but they also need business from the community to make their business work. Uh, maybe a bank or a drugstore or other types of retail. Uh, I think that we're far enough away from this, wha- what I call the true town center, which is, uh, 18 and 43. I, I don't know that we would have any, uh, positive benefit or negative benefit on whatever might happen there. You know, vast majority of any traffic that would be coming and going from our Brimfield Crossing site i- is going to and from the interstate. They're not typically heading south. Uh, I think any traffic is heading south is probably people who live there. I mean, that's traffic that's already here now, not new traffic in the future. Does that help answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to look at it from all perspectives. Like I said, my, my goal honestly is, um, through this land use development plan we're doing is to take feedback from you, the, you know, a stakeholder. And then, you know, the citizen stakeholders and weigh all these pieces to truly try to develop something that's going to be beneficial. That might not meet everyone's needs, but the majority of people's needs. And so just digging and peeling the layers of this onion back to have a better understanding for our citizens.
Well, there, there, there also could be a mix there. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I really liked my first domain idea, but it's not my property. Um, but you know, and I, and I, I'm also concerned about like a transit thing there would probably change that look of, uh, feel of the entrance of the city coming off of the turn, uh, coming off 76 there. But if, if everything was set back off the road, you do have a couple of out parcels near the front that could be, that are, look like they're big enough. I'm guessing, I haven't, I haven't done a site plan for them. They look like they're big enough for restaurants of some sort, which would still promote the town center area while still allowing some non-commercial development in the back. And when it immediately hit you as industrial coming off 76. So there's probably some give and take on that, you know? There could be some office industrial on the back and still have some retail, commercial, restaurant oriented, maybe to service the, serve the town center area.
Okay. Yeah. Cause I, I know that's one feedback that we've gotten from the community, um, is about what is the look of our township when you come off the interstate? You know, what is that look? What is that feel? Um, as, as people develop more houses here and more residents move in? They want the rural feel, but they also want some of the amenities. So we're trying to find some balance with all this.
We need some restaurants. I mean, we need some, we need some, I, I'm, I'm, I'm not really a fan of chain restaurants. I love the family restaurants much better. But we don't have any chain restaurants really anywhere in Porridge County. I mean, maybe there's a couple of streets below, but there's nothing in this part of the, uh, this part of the county. It's, I'm just kind of shocked by that. Maybe Tom's not because they want rooftops and things like that, but you're right off of 76, you're gotta be gathering in people from coming, you know, from outside of Porridge County. You know what I'm saying?
Well, yeah, I, I think that, uh, you know, the, the way that the Cascades and Maple Crest was zoned, that's where the restaurants are going to go. I mean, I don't know how many food establishments have opened there in the last couple of years, but that, that's, i- it's very difficult for me to make a case as to why a restaurant should build on my site when they've got all the traffic that they want, uh, and, 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 you know, the retail next door. Uh, you know, I, I'm glad we have
Let me rephrase. We have Applebee's down there and everything else and, and Panera's, I can sit down in Panera's for 15 minutes, but we really don't have a, a restaurant where you can sit down and get served. Applebee's is one, but the other restaurants, you really don't get to sit down and get served. You know, we could use a Macaroni Grill or something like that, for example.
I think we could really use a, uh, I'll be honest, I've tossed this out to Mike Glad multiple times. We, we need like a craft brewing place, like a craft brew restaurant, smaller name place. I think that would bring a lot of, would fit well in that downtown.
Texas Roadhouse.
Yes, yes, go ahead. Let's get more.
Well, I mean, you know, we, you, if you look at things like that, the closest ones around here, you know, you, you either have to go to Canton or to, uh, over to Stowe, you know,
Chapel Hill.
Area. Everywhere and they're always filled wherever you go. So.
Yeah.
So, so
Now that besides, you know, the, the, you know, two that come to mind that would locate by themselves and it will not be an island as long as they're near interstate would be a Bob Evans and a Cracker Barrel. Unfortunately, we've got Bob Evans just north, Cracker Barrels at 44. I don't think we'd probably attract either of those. When you're talking about, you know, Applebee's, uh, Macaroni Grill, those types of users, they're always going to be in a dense retail environment. Uh, they're, they're not going to be an outpost i- in interchange like ourselves with McDonald's and Speedway being the sole traffic generators.
So Tom, knowing what our zoning districts are today as they stand, e- even though we're going through this rezoning process right now, uh, as they stand today, if, if you had that magic one, you can say, my property becomes this today. What would you want to see that zone as? Cause that just gives us a starting point of things that we can think about.
Well, I, I'm not sure that there is a single district that, uh, really encompasses what I'm describing. Uh, the, the market is telling us that the big acreage, you know, 30, 32 acres on the west side of 43 is probably some type of a warehouse logistics distribution type of a use. I don't want to close the door to other potential uses, whether it's a corporate headquarters or big box retail. So I don't know if it's possible to create a new zoning district that would have a lot more flexibility that way for a range of uses. Yeah. I think the outlots, you know, that, that obviously is much more of a highway service kind of a thing. Uh, there's a portion of our land out front by 43 that's own town center though. Uh, so that, that would be very different than a highway service. Uh, you know, probably be helpful to have one district for all those outlots that would, uh, you know, have a range of flexibility for obvious types of highway service uses. Uh, if we ever had the opportunity to capture, you know, medical user, yeah, it, it, there, there's always that aspect where if, if a party knows that they have to go through a rezoning for the permission to build, a lot of times they'll find an easier site to develop because they know that's potentially a six-month process with a lot of unknowns and no guarantee that they would be successful. Uh, I think the sheets be a, an example of that. They were willing to go through the exercise, uh, pr- probably on, you know, our verbal representation that, oh, we didn't think there was any major, uh, didn't assist any major pushback. We, we thought it was a good fit for the site. I, I certainly respect, uh, you know, the township's decision. Otherwise, that's just an example where they put a lot of money into their due diligence and engineering. All of the conversations and negotiations will ODOT and at the end of the day, they end up having to walk away from that. Uh, mo- most users don't go to that extent. Uh, you know, they look for the sites that are appropriately zoned and go from there. So I, I'm not trying to criticize. I'm, I'm just trying to be as transparent as I can, you know, some of the hurdles and, and things that we face, uh, with that property.
No, no, I appreciate that. Like I said, I mean, we're, we're trying to gather this stakeholder feedback is, because now is a critical time for the township is, is we're trying to make some decisions for the long haul here. Um, and make sure we're moving in the right direction.
Yeah.
Okay. Mike, you got anything? See you there yet? You still there, Mike?
Yeah, I'm still there.
Okay.
What's happening? Sorry. No, that's, that's about it from a Wheezy standpoint, what, what, uh, and then we could take everything in consideration. Todd, we could, uh, further discuss this with the board. Um, as we go through this whole, um, comprehensive land use plan and start, start narrowing this down and take a good look at what the community has given back into the survey and, and try to fit the needs of everybody like, like Nick was saying. Um, but we could go ahead and, uh, Todd, you've got a whole, whole bunch of stuff for us with comprehensive land use plan to go forward. Yep.
Yeah, I still have, I, I don't, we're, we're moving on to the cop plan now?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey Mike, uh, before you guys move on to that, um, do you need me for anything else?
No, I think we're good unless you want to just sit and listen, um, you know, on YouTube or whatever.
Is Tom Wheezy still on or did he sign off?
I don't see him.
I don't see him on there. Okay.
Yeah.
So anyway, Mike, you and Todd and, and, uh, Nick and the trustees are gonna put your heads together a little bit and see what you think about all this and maybe keep the zoning commission, uh, up to date on where you're going with it and
Yeah. I mean, uh, this is going to be, this is going to be key between, um, the zoning commission, this board and, and the trustees. Um, as well as Todd, along with, uh, everything that the feedback that we have received from the community is where we want to head the direction. We want to definitely listen to the residents uh, and the taxpayers and what, what they truly want to see, uh, Brimfield become in the future. And it's, it's a crucial part. We don't want to be a hodgepodge. We want to have good planning. Um, I agree with some of the things that were said about Maple Crest. I think, um, ultimately you're going to see, uh, some nice restaurants down there, um, especially as these homes are popping right next door in Talmage. Uh, in one week, Rich Costin told me they sold 20 homes of those pool teas.
Is that right?
So, well, I, it's extremely popular area, but you know, don't, don't forget the zoning that we're changing or we're proposing to change right now, this integrated commercial as it sits right now is what they asked for, and we just re-zoned the area down by Maple Crest.
Right. Yeah.
It's not, it's, it's not that the district or the zoning district is bad. I mean, it's a, it's a popular use. And I think right now we have four users that are going to be coming in under that district. They were waiting for that change.
Good.
And then we have one today, which is a big u- uh, user behind Meyer as well. So there's things popping. Um, we, we have a record year, uh, this year. Again, we had a record year last year for permits and in our first three months, we have, uh, we're, we'll, we'll sur- surpass it by the end of March. Um, what we did off last year. So, and we've never had this many permits ever. Um, we did a history all the way back as far as they were recorded and, and, um, it's just, we're going crazy and Lauren's busy the whole time. I'm sure she worked all the way up till this, this last minute of, of this meeting as we're trying to keep up. Um, but you know, I, I think it's very crucial that we, we listen to, to what the residents want.
Yeah, just, uh, ju- just on a personal note here, I, uh, I'm not terribly impressed with the, uh, the, uh, show house there at Talmage, the Talmage crossings. That's not a nice, I, I don't think it's a, a very stunning house to have, uh, as a, uh, model. I was disappointed.
Oh, oh, you're talking about in Talmage, the
Yeah, yeah.
For some reason, it's, they're sounding like crazy. I, I don't know the price range or if it's the location, but um,
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's just going, I mean, we, don't, don't get me wrong. Cranberry Creek i- is very, very popular. We're seeing, you know, like three, three house permits per week out of that area. Uh, and they're building, and they're building beautiful homes down there. Todd, I took you down there. They, they look, they look fantastic.
I took my wife down there.
Yeah, I, I tried to, I tried to sell them on it. I think, did I sell you?
Um, she's interested. We just need to know when they're going to open that other phase and she'll, she'll take a closer look.
Well, you know, that, that other phase is going to be beautiful because it goes back up to the sled riding area and, and, uh,
Yeah, we, uh, those first five lots on that one side is the, uh, the, the prime lots.
Yeah. Sugar Maple Farm. So they started, uh, have they started digging yet?
They, they have. And, um, you know, we do get some complaints from some people on it. Um, but the end result is the, the homes are going to be gorgeous back in there. And, you know, it was always intended to be residential there and we can't
Yes, it was. Yeah.
Stop people from using their land. If it's zoned correctly and, and that's what, that's what they're, uh, going after, then you know, God bless them.
Well, when they did Sugar Maple, you know, if, if you look at the first group of houses on going in, uh, on the left-hand side, that's what they were all supposed to look like. Nothing under like $300,000 or something.
Yeah, I don't think there's a single home, uh, in there right now, probably less than Yeah, I don't think there's a single home uh in there right now, probably less than three fifty.
Yeah.
The new ones are going in. Um, they're all right in that area.
Now, I think a lot of people was disappointed when uh Ryan Holmes started building some up in there.
Oh, my gosh, if you look at the new Ryan Holmes, though, and that's why I was talking to Todd, if you look at the. The architecture and the style that they're building in there, it's it's on, but they're very nice.
On Cranberry?
Yeah, they're not their the typical cookie cutter home.
I know. Yeah, I was down through there.
Yeah.
But and and Mike told me the Amish people are building those Ryan Holmes and my wife's like, yeah, sure. And when we're down there, there's some Amish guys out there pouring a basement. Yeah.
You know, every every one of those Ryan Holmes is is being, you know, framed by the Amish town there.
Yeah.
And the reason is is that um there's so many sales in Lake County that that most of the typical Ryan. Um, subs are are out in Lake County trying to finish up those projects for them and and they have all new subs by us. They're using locals and they're they're bringing people from. From, you know, the Amish both in in Middlefield and and down south. Um, up just to to fill the slot and actually the houses are coming out really nice. They look good. So impressed.
And they pretty much have filled uh down off of Edson Road there, haven't they?
Uh, yeah, yes.
Uh, what's the road there that goes back in?
You're, are you talking and and refresh my memory, you're talking about the um.
Yeah, that's the one.
Honey suckle.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 yes, yes. Yeah, Honey Chuck. Yeah, there is some, there's some uh lots that that were in the back back there with the back call to Zach that uh we just issued permits for. So the last builder coming in.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Hey, Mike, uh, I'm gonna hop off here. I just got back from being out of town for a few days, but I just wanted to talk to the commission real quick, just say thank you for everything you're doing. Um, I know during the COVID, this has not always been ideal to meet on Zoom meetings, but you guys are doing a great job. Um, we truly appreciate all the work you're doing and I'm excited to uh see what you develop and put together for this comprehensive land use plan. I know there's a lot of work ahead of us, but um really do appreciate it. Uh, and this is your chance to represent our community and help have a say in what this community is going to look like for the next ten, twenty, thirty years. Um, so keep up the good work. If you need anything, my phone is always available. Uh, I often do listen into these on uh on on YouTube. I try not to join often because I don't want to sway things. I want you guys to make the decision to represent the community. So I thank you. Uh, Mike, you're doing a great job. To the team, you're doing an amazing job. If you need anything, uh, please let me know.
Thanks, Nick.
All right, you guys have a great night.
Nick, Nick, real quick before you go.
Yeah, yeah.
Did the trustees indicate any uh uh time that we will be back to meeting in person?
Uh, not yet.
Are we waiting on the governor?
Yeah, so the problem is we're we're waiting on the governor because of the ten people. We still have the ten-person restriction. Um, so we have, once we bring the board together, if we bring any meeting guests in, then we're going to be over that. So we are working on some tech pieces. When we do come back together, the meetings are going to be held at the community center. Um, because we have closed down um temporarily the administration building because of the construction, but also because the fire department's in there. And the firefighters with their med calls, we don't want to expose anybody to to potential COVID with with the call runs that they do. So um we have done the initial work down at the community center. We hung the mics. Um, we did one live broadcast for for the swearing in of Ben Mars, our newest uh patrolman. And tech went pretty well, so I'm hoping sooner than later, but but really the governor is is a big hurdle for us to get over too, because that ten-person meeting requirement.
All right, but when that when that goes away, then we'll probably start entertaining the idea of.
Yeah, I mean, if if. If the governor changed that tomorrow, we'd be having trustee meetings and we'd be asking those that felt comfortable. We're still gonna leave the Zoom uh option open for now to give options for people. Uh, because this uh meeting standards allowed by Ohio law, I believe, till June right now is what the legislator gave us an extension on. Uh, we'll watch that uh to see if that extension changes. Uh, but at that point, we would open it up to optional. You could be in person or attend via Zoom and then we'll have a TV down there for those people that are zooming in. Um, because we want to keep everybody as healthy and safe as we can too.
Right. Okay.
Okay, thanks, Nick.
All right, no problem. Everyone, have a great night.
You too. Okay, we're gonna go to land use with uh Todd. Uh. I I guess Tom Reese just signed off.
He's still here.
Oh, there you are. You just switched the screens.
My phone battery went dead and it took me about three minutes to get.
Okay.
With a cord.
So we're going to uh. We're gonna be working together, uh, Todd and Mike and and Nick and the zoning commission are gonna be uh. Uh, working together to see what we can come up with, yeah.
So.
Okay.
You, yeah, I I used to basically tell you, Tom, is 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 you can stay if he wants, but this is where it kind of gets dry. Okay, well, I'll hit my mute button here.
Okay, stay on the mute. All right, here we go. I'm gonna I'm gonna share the screen for you guys, okay? Um. Uh, here we go. Hello. What what just came up? Not Commissioner Ben's letter.
Ten.
Okay, good, because I I just have Sabrina Bennett's letter came up on my thing, so let's put that away. Okay, so on chapter ten, I was worried you saw that letter. Um, anyway, so on the the first part, you saw a lot of this. There's some new stuff that we we didn't talk about the last meeting. We went through most of this already. Um, but there's stuff you hadn't seen yet. I don't think you saw the nine um implementation actions, the what, you know, how you implement. Implement the plan and and and, you know, there's different ways to implement the plan. There's different reasons for implementing the plan. So um. So basically, you know, it's the 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 plan is the official policy of the township is the guiding development project, you know, uh, product. Uh, it helps with funding, it helps with land use decisions. It's also to help educate the public about the plan. We're taught, we talked about the interactive maps. Um, we'll be showing you more of those here in the near future, but there's some really good interactive maps. So the the important thing about those interactive maps that we're gonna have online is the plan will no longer be just a document that sits on your shelf. It'll be a document that the public can. Use, you guys can use, anybody can use, and hopefully become much more of a living document that everybody always says they want the plan to be. Um, you know, it it helps with revising the zoning code, supporting those goals and objectives and policies that we we discuss and talk about. Um, it requires compliance with the plan in zoning and development requests. So you want to make sure that when somebody comes in and says, I want a zoning request. Well, what does the plan say? Is this consistent or not? Again, the plan's a living document. It's not written stone. If somebody comes to you and says, hey, you know, I got a really good idea or I got a really good opportunity or project here for us. You know, it may, it may mean the plan needs to be amended as well as the zoning does. So I'm not saying that the the plan is meant to necessarily be the written stone. Um, number five is maintain the official land use map. So we just talked about maintaining that, trying to keep that. In place unless something changes that we need to to address. Obtain and allocate funding uh to achieve goals and objectives. So the 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 land use plan, you know, you say, hey, we want to, we want to park and, you know, we need a park in our community. I'm just making something up here. But we need a park in our community. Um, there may be grant funds for parks. You sit there and say, we want to park, we need this park for X, Y, Z reasons. It's in our plan. It's our, something our community wants. And those grantors are looking for that that shows that the community is committed to doing that kind of thing. So that's, you know, that's just one way of getting money. It might be the plan says we, you know, you're also gonna see this in a minute. The police officers say, hey, we need cars updated every so often or we need new equipment or we need. Just new officers, we need, the community is growing or maybe crime's getting worse. So um the plan, there's grants for for police officers, grants for firefighters, there's grants for a lot of different things. And you can point to the plan and say, it's in our plan. This is something we need. And again, it scores big points when you're writing your grant. Uh, involve stakeholders in the community, members, you know, the community members in the planning implementation. So. Even before we even have a plan, obviously, we had Tom Weezy in here as a as an important uh land, piece of land in this in this in the township and. And something that is important maybe to the town center area. So again, it's it's really, really good to involve them now. So that everybody's on the same page. Let's say we did change it to something to to town center, for example, and. You know, now Tom and the skipper group's not happy. Now we got problems. So it's really good that it to reach out to the to landowners and get them involved. And even after the plan's adopted, to still reach out to the landowners and and work with them as as best we can. Uh, so coordinate and communicate with the surrounding jurisdictions. So obviously, we you already have a good relationship with Talmage and city of Kent. But then you also need to have a good relationship with Roots Town and the county and and others, you know, however that benefits the the township. Uh, we should take advantage of those of those opportunities to collaborate and coordinate. And probably most importantly, the reason, one of the reasons why you want a plan is the county doesn't, the county. Doesn't have a plan. So they're constantly reacting and double reacting and maybe overreacting because they have no plan. And so they just basically take care of things as they come up. So with a plan, now you're proactive. Now you've got things you want to do, things you want to accomplish and you time it out and you actually start saving for stuff and you actually start looking for grand opportunities. If you don't have a plan, you're just kind of spinning your wheels a little bit. Now, I I say all that in a very harsh way because it should, I should say it in a harsh way, but the reality is the commissioners recognize the fact that they do need a plan. And we're in the the process of getting a contract signed to have a the first ever countywide plan. Now, when we talk with your trustees, that that discussion was kind of in the works and then we had COVID and everything got put on hold because they didn't know what the impacts of COVID was going to mean to the county and the county's budget and stuff like that. So they said they put it on hold. Now they want to get that going again. And uh, so the county's plan is gonna look, you know, we're looking probably at the five to ten thousand foot level of things. The the county's plan is probably gonna be at the fifty to fifty to a hundred thousand foot level. So we're not. Doing, we're not, we're not gonna do the city, uh, Brimfield Township twice. We're gonna take what you guys recommend. And put that right into the county's plan is what the things you guys want to to achieve and accomplish. And the way I, the way I've been describing it, the people who ask questions about how do, do we have a plan, why, how are we gonna fit into the county's plan? I look at all of the plans that have been put together out there is like a big quilt and we're just, we're just patch, you know, patching them all together. And there's no desire to change what a community wants to do or be. I mean, I think that's. You know, for each community to decide, that's the individual, the individuality of each community is why you live there, is why you want to live there. But the idea is to see really with a a better idea, the way to describe is what is the big picture of all the communities? So we can start striving to reach out and achieve the things that the communities in as a whole want to see happen. You know, better, better roads, I'm assuming, you know, better ways to provide water and sewer service, where's the commercial should be, where where it shouldn't be, where, how do we protect our 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 uh. Rural areas, you know, how do we promote our more urban or suburban areas, you know, that kind of thing. But as in a big picture. You know, obviously, we're not going to get down to the, you know, we're gonna show like, we're gonna show like township or township parks, for example, we're gonna show everybody's parks. But the idea isn't to get down and tell everybody how to run the parks. The idea is just to say, these parks exist and the kind of services that are provided there. And that again is better community information at countywide. Okay, so I probably told you more about that than you wanted to hear. So did anybody have any questions about the first part of that, the implementation uh schedule? And I I know I talk fast, so I apologize. If I need to stop, if you have a question and I need to stop. You know, make me stop and let's talk about it. So this next part, we didn't talk about the last meeting. This is the part where we actually met with the township trustees. And the different um um department heads of the township. And we talked about what is their one-year goal, three-year goals and five-year goals. And what we had them do is on the one side, you know, for the first one here is IT, the, you know, internet technologies uh department, you know, what do they need to do? Um, who are their partners? Who are they gonna be working with? We asked them to do the cost. We asked them, you know, where, what are your funding sources? And then what's the timeframe you want to complete these things? So. These are the things that 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 they're striving for, that the trustees would like them to complete. They want to hold them accountable to to complete. Um, we talked about when they do complete things that they should be celebrated, you know, to the community should know that they've completed these projects so that. You know, there's more information or more uh services being prob- provided to the township. So. The, you know, I don't know if you have any questions on those. Here's the parks, you know, you can see what they're wanting to do in twenty-two, twenty, you know, all these in twenty-two, and then you got to see what they're doing in three years in twenty twenty-four. And then you can see what they want to do in twenty twenty-six. So I don't know if y'all had a chance to to look at this. Um, the road department, you know, they they're looking at for infrastructure repair, you know, maybe. So so replace the shop for the road department and they have timelines, how much that might cost. Um. The one thing we had, here's the fire department. There's a renewal level. We just don't know when their renewal levy is up. That's why I have a question mark there. Where they might be buying their cars, how much everything is going to cost, timeline. Police Department, I probably should page to break that better, get that down here. So and then, you know, we probably need many more information about what Lexi Pool is, for example. But it talks about cost, when it's going to be completed. Um, obtaining cruisers, they probably want cruisers every every few years. To rotate the the stock of cars that they have. You know, they talked about down here hiring two full, two more full-time staff by twenty twenty-four. You can see kind of things that they want to do. And this is good stuff for you guys as as residents too, because you guys probably are kind of curious what the what what's the township's trying to accomplish. So now they have it in the plan. And, you know, the plan should be updated every every five years or so, but this section of the plan could probably be updated annually if you if you want. I mean, it's. They're gonna probably, they probably should meet every year when they, when they're preparing your budgets. And they can say, where are we, where are we with some of these projects? We got, oops, I'm sorry. We, here, here we have zoning and economic development. These are the things that Mike um that he was trying to achieve. So we will list all the stuff out here. The CRA by next year. The test, then have it all the new zone, you know, new zoning districts by twenty-three, four, manufacturing, all this, all this stuff is listed listed out here for you guys. And the last one, what was that? Again, here's the, this is what the trustees put down in their list of things that they want to get it, get accomplished. So. And then I think we discussed all these goals, objectives and policies the last meeting. I was shocked that we were able to get through all these pages. At the last meeting, you may not be shocked because I talk fast, but at the last meeting, I asked you guys to please take your time to read it. I hope if you had questions, you know, this is probably the time to to bring them up. Do you guys have questions?
I don't.
I just, I just want to make sure that I am not going so fast that you guys didn't feel com- either comfortable asking the questions or I didn't give you the opportunity to ask questions. I want to make sure that you guys. Have the kind of things that you want for your community and I'm just, just, I can't stress that enough. This isn't Todd's plan. This isn't Mike's plan. This is your plan. So. I just want to make sure we're on the same page there.
Doing good, Todd.
Okay, well, there's more. We keep going. So one thing you haven't seen was at the end. Now we have action tables. So action, but the but the purpose of the action table is is again, looking at all our goals and objectives. That really aren't, you know, being worked on necessarily at any one time by those departments, but they should actually have in the back of their mind that they should be thinking about. So like we have the housing section, we have, we have the different objectives here. Who's the responsible entity? And it's not just one person. It should all, it probably shouldn't be more than one person if 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 possible. So for example, you know, and you know, maintain the variety of the hous- housing stacks. So obviously, that is Mike. He's doing the best he can to maintain that. And we have a few things here at the beginning when it talks about housing, the zoning inspector does that. The zoning commission here, I talked about supporting development for senior living. You know, you guys were working on things to see if we can help with that in zoning code, part of to provide transportation for senior living. Um, over here in the environmental, we have the different objectives, you know, we have the county floodplain manager, the zoning inspector and the zoning commission. You know, protecting, you know, making sure development doesn't happen in the floodplain. You have stuff here about reducing runoff and and flooding. So again, the zoning inspector, zoning commission. The private developers, Porch Council and Water District, you know, and and then we have a timeframe appearing and completion date. We didn't put any completion dates because none were identified unless we wanted, I did say, hey, we want to have no floodplain problems by twenty twenty-five and then we just put that date in there. And then we, that, you know, I, to be honest with you, that's probably a bad example because we don't want any. We want a few buildings built in the floodplain as possible. I mean, you can put parking in a floodplain, you can put your open space in a floodplain, but you don't want to put structures in a floodplain. So that was probably a bad example, but but I do have a time, you know, a completion date if we want to give it one. So you can go through all of these. They're related back to the, they're related back to the, to the um objectives and who the responsible entities is. Again. A lot of times when people see all these objectives and all these strategies, they sit there and say, how are we ever going to do that? And and the reality is there's a lot of different entities, like over here on this, this is the community facility. Like over here on this, this is the community facilities. Ensure growth does not outpace the ability to provide services. So you have the zoning inspector, economic development, Porch County Water Resources. The city can provides water, city of Talmage provides water and sewer. Uh, developer and developments, you have Parta who can provide better transit. Amets who can improve, improve upon the streets. The county engineer and road department for the township as well as the township trustees all have to work together. To make sure that we don't let growth outpace your, your ability to provide services. It only makes sense. Um, so we have all these here too, that you guys can take your time to, to look through and, and think about. But this is, you know, so when you're up here, I'm sorry. When you're up in here talking about these objectives, come on, keep going. When you're up in here, you're like, how is this going to happen? Who's going to do all this? Well, we provide, we provide that information down here. So I hope that helps you guys. And I do have something else to show you guys. I, and I apologize to all of you and to Lauren as well and to Mike. Me and Mike, me and Mike met to talk about maps that I wanted to show you guys. And I thought I sent them to Lauren and then I, when I opened up my, the email I sent to Lauren, it did not have the maps. You want me to show you maps so we can talk about the next meeting or, or not?
Yeah, a question, Todd. Real quick, where can we find this document again?
Well, I don't know. I, I know I gave, I gave this, I know, did you guys get this document for tonight's meeting?
Yeah, Lauren, I think Lauren sent this out to everybody. I'm not so sure on the date.
I didn't see it in my inbox.
Lauren, are you still there?
I don't think so.
I just had to unmute it. Yeah, that would have been, that was like last week, wasn't it? I'm not, I don't have the working computer, so I don't have them on and I can resend everyone in the morning if.
All right, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. The, the biggest thing, and Todd, I would go over the, uh, zoning map as well. But at least brief it so that people could see what's going on and then we could send them a copy of that as well.
Okay. Let me find it. There we go. Ready? Here I go again. So, it, it came up, the zoning map?
Yeah.
I think we talked about these a little bit, but here, I'm going to start with this one first and then we're going to go all the way to the future lands map. So this first map is the existing land uses. And again, this existing land use map is based on how the auditor codes it. Auditor codes things for, for tax purposes. So sometimes they'll, they'll code a trailer park or, or a condo as commercial, not, not a condo, an apartment building. As commercial because it's, it's a commercial business because they're charging for that. So sometimes you'll see stuff and you say, hey, that's not commercial. But for the most part, you know, you can see the map here. These, this, you can see that there's a lot of, there's a lot of agriculture in here. In these, these four corners, there's some agriculture right in here, a little bit of agriculture in here. Um, and that's important because one of the things that was mentioned in the survey quite a bit was that, people are okay with the township growing, but they don't want to lose their rural character. So we got to find that happy balance between allowing certain areas to develop and then, and at the same time, uh, finding that balance with maintaining that rural character, which I think we did in the future lands map, which we'll show you. Um, the reds, of course, all these reds you see here are the commercials, the industrials. Are, where is that going? Oh, there it goes. These purples are, I don't know if that's purple or not on your screen, but it looks like purple to me. Maybe it's a, anyway, so there's that. We have some government, we have some parks. You can see where some of the parks are, some are owned by the county, some of them owned by you guys. Some are owned by the city of Akron. Um, so. So that's the existing land use map. Now go to your current zoning map. So this is the current zoning map. You know, we have our, we have our open space and these greens, these are the rural residential, these light, light greens. Some of the heavier residential are here, the high-density residential are the darker browns. This is the town center area, this integrated commercial, integrated commercial. This is highway commercial. This is general commercial, general commercial, integrated commercial, integrative commercial, general commercial. And this, um, this is light industrial, light industrial, light industrial, light industrial. This is a heavy industrial, heavy industrial there. And then we've got some low-density residential here, medium-density residential here. And then, and then a high, medium density in these darker, these slightly darker browns, not quite as dark as these browns. So that's the existing, so that's the existing. Here's the, I'm going to skip the proposal and I'm going to go to developable areas map next. So this is an interesting map because, so we, we have three developable areas. There we have, we have this green, greens means go, and that means you have water and sewer there. Then we have these yellows, that means you're in the vicinity of water and sewer and they're, they are developable. But they also may not have. They may have water, they may have sewer, they may just have one of, one of the two kind of thing. And then these, these, I don't know what color that is. It's a weird, weird kind of pink. It's not pink, but it's a weird kind of color. Anyways, those areas have no water, no sewer. And, you know, just, just, they're, they're missing those key, those key, um, utilities to help make things grow. So you can, you can see where the, the subdivisions are. They have water and sewer, water and sewer down here and it's in road. Well, you know, water and sewer across Talmage here, right through here, here's Pleasant Lakes, you know, so there's a lot of areas of water and sewer. But here's that hot road area that doesn't have water and sewer down it. That's a great, great location potentially for a commercial or, office, but you have no water and sewer, so it's really hard to develop that for that. Um, and then these areas, we talked about these areas being rural, these areas being rural, these areas being rural. So that's, that's probably good. Also associated with this map is wetlands. So these diagonal stripes that you see right in here, up in here, this is the Kent Bog, for example. Those are wetlands. These reds you see, that's not commercial anymore. That is now a floodplain. So you don't want to develop in those floodplain areas. And then we do have some areas of, of land that's protected and they're protected because it's been bought to, is like here, this is areas protected. This is again, city of Akron with Mogadore Reservoir. Some of these have been protected for agricultural, um, purposes. Um, so anyways, so there's, there's those. Um, and again, that's how the, the map looks. Um, I go, I'm going to go to the proposed zoning area. Well, actually, no, I'm going to go to the future land use area. So here's the future land use map. A little bit different than the current zoning map. So go back to the future land use map. So again, you see that we have all this commercial going down into here. We actually are showing, um, this whole area is the town center area here. This is, this is, um, Maple Crest and Cascades here. We're showing mixed use here, residential and commercial over here. These are our subdivisions, so that's residential, residential, residential. But then those areas that don't have water and sewer and are large properties and already mostly agriculture, we're showing those as the rural areas. And again, when we taught, when we looked at the survey, people were saying we need to preserve rural. And I think we actually added, um, with this map, as the future land use map, added more, protection towards rural than, than previously existed. Um, so I think we're meeting the, the, the requirement there. But the, what goes along with this map is then the, the proposed zoning. It doesn't want to let me open it. Damn. Alright, so this is the proposed zoning. I don't have my little cheat sheet in front of me, what all the numbers stand for. Um, I think this was going to be the new, um, residential medium density, which I think it already kind of was. This is residential medium, residential medium down here. This is the old, I believe this is the old Holiday Inn. It's shown as an open space. It's, it should be highway commercial. We have down here, these changing to integrated commercial. We have, this is an IC. Currently, we've showed that as town center. We were talking about this property this evening, about whether or not that should be a town centerpiece or stay IC. We'll probably have to come back to that one. This piece here, we were talking about making that, um, an industrial area. You know, and, and the future land is not, yeah, so that was industrial, touching that to light industrial. I think this was to, to, this was a residential office. I think we were talking about changing this also to light industrial. I have to double check that. Um, like I said, I don't have my cheat sheet in front of me. Um, but that's, that was, that's where all the changes are at this point that we have recommended going forward. I will go back to the future and you can see that. So we do have, and one thing we don't have, we didn't recommend for zoning change, maybe that comes later, is this area here. That, that is shown mostly as commercial along the frontage. These, there's some big tracks right here that go back and they're in, they're in decent shape, go back to the developable area. So those big tracks are right here in that yellow, they just don't have water and sewer to them. So that was one reason to help find more industrial up here, up against city of Kent, for example. And here, well, let me go back. Alright, the zoning map here, the, the commerce, the, the GC general commercial goes pretty far back off of forty-three. Um, in the future, we, we made that much tighter to forty-three because a lot of these are already houses on these streets that come off here. So we weren't sure if that really made sense. So Mike pointed that out to us, that he thought maybe we should, um, show these more as residential and these closer to forty-three as the commercials. Um, you know, this is that again, that next area that we talked about with IC. Uh, Maple Crest, Cascades, all that, all that was light industrial. I guess that one piece I wasn't sure about, I guess that would have been like industrial. Um, we talked about this being light industrial.
Todd, do you have that sheet with your percentages of, um, what is residential? I think that was kind of key.
It would be, it would be awesome, wouldn't it? I don't, I don't have it in front of me though. So, um, I'll have to talk to, I, I, you know, again, I thought I sent all that to Lauren, but obviously I didn't, so it's not Lauren's fault. Um, and I, and I thought I had set over that key and I, I don't have the key with me. But I can, I, you know, I can send that, since you guys didn't get these maps, I will send all these maps to you, Mike. And to Lauren, to, to send out to everybody. And then I'll also send that key out, how the, how that, how those uses.
I think mine opened, so I'll double check mine and see, see what would, what's going on with that. But I do have, um, and I'm just pulling this one up here. So this is just existing now. This is not the proposal. The proposal wasn't going too much further. Now, Todd, if I'm not mistaken, that your agriculture is at twenty-nine percent. Um, your park is eight point five percent. Uh, your education and your government are, are another two percent. So your single-family residential, um, areas right now is thirty-one point five percent. Uh, so basically the residential and agriculture are, are just about the same percentages. Uh, your commercial, um, right now is that five point one percent, which is, it sounds like we have a ton of commercial, but we really don't. Um, we're proposing that, a small increase on that, but where we're going to try to increase is, we have industrial is three point five percent, which is our light industrial and heavy industrial. And we're looking to bump that up to ten point nine percent with light and heavy industrial. Um, predominantly light industrial. I think there's a small portion of heavy that we might have increased. Um, and then, uh, our water and wetlands are eleven percent in a right away with, which is transportation. Is, um, six point three percent. So when you look at that, it's a pretty good balance. Um, you know, especially when you're keeping, you know, between, there's thirty percent agriculture and, and almost another nine percent, uh, a park. Uh, plus governments, you know, has another two percent. So we, we're keeping that, um, township feel as we grow.
Right. So, so I'll send these maps, I'm sending the maps and I'll get the, I'll get the percentage breakdowns to you all. So, um, so the only thing we're really left, you know, and we talked to Mike about this a little bit. Is we just need to beef up one, one or two more sections of the, of the write-up. I mean, and then once we finish that, we're going to put it all together and send it to you guys for you guys to start reviewing for the, you know, for your final recommendations to send up to the trustees. I don't know if we need to have a, an outreach to the public or not, but, um, it's something we could do if you need, if you needed to. But, I, I mean, I think we're almost to the point where you're ready to, to send it up there.
And, and the way we post these meetings is if anybody wants to join us, um, they can on here, they, you know. Um, if anybody has a concern or they can certainly, you know, send it in to us or, or ask to be on this meeting. Um, and we'll, we'll make that happen.
Any questions? Okay.
No questions.
Did you have something, Tom?
I was just going to, uh, suggest that if it'd be possible for, for us to take a look at any proposed zoning language, for the Skipper Group property, we would very much appreciate that. Uh, we were very involved back in two thousand and four with Dick Messner when you did the last rewrite. And that was very helpful to craft that language in a way that we felt was mutually agreeable. So I feel like I've just been sharing, you know, thoughts, uh, tonight, but I, I don't really have anything to react to. Because I don't know what vision, you know, was in the heads of, of the zoning commission members. But if there's actual language that's been crafted, we'd be more than happy to take a look at that and provide feedback.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
What we really need is one of those crystal balls that was really working, you know? We had one of those, you know exactly what to do.
Did the, the, the sheets project, that's, that's a dead project now?
That is correct. They have pulled out and rescind contract.
Alright, thank you. Okay, anything for the good of the order? Eight for the next meeting.
April eighth.
April eighth?
April eighth, that's the second Thursday of the month.
Okay.
Wow. Okay. You have anything, Mike? Wherever, where'd you go, Mike?
No, I'm, I'm here. I'm just looking at dates. She's faster than me. I'm pulling out my calendar. She's shot the dates out, so that's awesome. Um, yeah, that, it's the, it's April the eighth and, and, uh, no, I don't have anything further to add.
Is, is the guy down at, uh, just, uh, just west of the interstate there, he's taking all those, uh, yard, uh, buildings or whatever they are. Moving all those in there. Is he moving out of?
So, so that's actually good news. He's going to clean up that site. That guy sells sheds down at, um, in Hartville.
Okay.
Um, and, and I don't know if you guys have seen him down there before or not. Um, but he, he came in and he leased that and he came into the Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, for his use, his conditional use.
So it's not the same.
Clean the whole site up.
It's not the same guy that's in the plaza then?
No, no, totally different. And he's going to clean it all up, stone it, uh, clean up that, that building and, and get those sheds in there. It looks a lot better already.
Yes, it does. Much better.
They just have a problem with, I don't know where these semis came from. Now they're parking in the, where the.
I know.
Repair guy was, and now I got another, another violation to take care of.
And, and the big box trucks.
Yeah, I don't understand how that just happened. They just came out of nowhere. I'm like, what the heck? So, yeah, I, I guess send him a nasty letter, but.
Where are they parking at?
There, there was a mechanic shop next to where they were selling those mattresses. And, uh, now all of a sudden, there's a bunch of box semi sitting there.
Oh gosh, I didn't pay attention to it. I was looking at the sheds.
They just, I mean, they just came in within the last few days. I, I'm like, where in the world did this come from? So, um, yeah, it's another violation. And we're, we're hitting violations hard this year. We're going to be knocking houses down. Uh, we're tearing houses down and I've got, um, one lawyer working on it for us. We're at least we're going to tear down four, uh, potentially more than that if we have more money to, to fund into that. But, um, yeah.
And, and where's the car wash going?
So, um, there is a user, uh, down in Maple Crest next to Arby's in, in the lower lot. Like if you look and there's another driveway, they have a potential user that's going to be coming in. Uh, actually won't be coming in. It'll be coming in my office as a permitted use. Uh, that should be coming in shortly. And then, um, opposite of that drive, uh, if you're facing Bernard's, it'd be the left of that. That furthest drive is going to be the, the new car wash and that's.
Okay.
Wave, wave wash is called. And they just submitted their, uh, architectural features. It was really nice. They got nice stonework all across the building. It, it's a very, very modern.
Good.
Clean looking.
Now, was the barber shop coming in at Cascades or was it going in at Maple Crest?
So we have a proposal, you know, and plans with an architect to, uh, change it into the Cascades. He's going to spend a lot of money renovating, so, uh, we're looking forward to that. And then you have Jiffy. And then you have Jiffy Lube, which is going in the front of Evo Brady's over there, so. And then we have, we have an industrial user proposed for behind Meyer. And I'll be telling you, is that, does that starts coming to fruition, I'll share that with everybody once, once I'm allowed to.
Very good.
All right, I'll be watching those trustee meetings, Mike.
Any, anything else for, anybody else have anything? No? Okay, motion to adjourn.
Did everybody get, and I have to ask you because I know Tom Sargent asked for it last year, he was really proud of it. And I said, boy, I'll get it to you. Did you guys get my 2020 year-end report?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, perfect, okay.
Great, great.
And that, pretty much, if you look at that, that spells out everything we do, from permitting, new violations throughout the year to just about everything we did for the whole year, so. We'll be doing that.
Great job.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, motion to adjourn, please.
I have motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, go ahead, Tom.
You, you second it, Debbie?
Yep, I did, but I thought Tom did too.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, the meeting's adjourned.